So I call to order the meeting of May 22, 2013. Second item on the agenda is the approval of meeting minutes, May 13, 2013.
Will of approval of minutes of Monday, May 13, 2013?
Second.
A motion made in second, any comment? All in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Number three is the future meeting date, so we're meeting on the 30th to interview the police patrolman, which I believe will be a long night. And again, on June 20th. But we do have a June 6 meeting, which we're -- because there's a band playing out here, Emery, you said that we should move it to the MPEG studios?
Yes, there's a band concert on June 6, and it does get quite loud, and it's hard for you to hear. So MPEG has offered their studios for your selectmen's meeting, June 6.
That's kind of me.
I'll go with that. MPEG Studio, 6:30, June 6. Number four, Citizen Speak. Anyone here for Citizen Speak? Come on up. Evening.
Again, it's Wins Swenson, 65 Green Street, Milton. Last week, I was here, and you were kind enough to hear me out at some length. I'll try and be much shorter this evening. But I wanted to sort of clarify and reiterate my request that the Board of Selectmen, in their letter to Mass Housing, support basically the gist of what I was arguing for last week. But I guess I wanted to start by clarifying what it is that I'm asking you to support and not asking you to support. So what I'm asking you to support is, I guess, a request to Mass Housing that it undertake a due diligence evaluation itself of two issues. One is, does Mill Creek currently meet current standards for managing ethics and compliance? And second, can it demonstrate a track record of acting lawfully and ethically? So what I'm asking you to do is to support that notion.
I missed the second part. What was the second?
To demonstrate that it has a track record of acting lawfully and ethically. So what I'm not asking you to do is to support my conclusions, which are that Mill Creek fails on those two counts. I think I've made a persuasive case, and I've convinced myself that it fails, but I'm not asking you to support that. What I'm asking you to basically to say is that there is a reason for Mass Housing to look at this question more carefully. And the rationale behind that is, I guess, four or five points. The first is that certainly I would think that the town would recognize that it has an interest in ensuring that a developer that will be working with all of its departments, pretty much, and that will be setting up shop in a neighborhood that is culturally, historically, and environmentally very significant, has the wherewithal to act in a responsible manner. So that's point one. Point two is that an expert has come forward, and I guess my bona fides are sort of available, they're publicly available, you can Google me. I did bring a bio this time, in case that would be helpful, which I can pass on to But it's certainly my record is pretty public and available. So secondly, that an expert has come forward, the expert has worked with many, many corporations over the years, has been a retained expert by the Department of Justice, has provided reports to the SEC, the US Air Force, actually was a monitor in a case in Massachusetts before I was a Massachusetts resident about 10 years ago. A company that got sideways with USAID, a Massachusetts company got in trouble with USAID, and under a settlement with the US Attorney from Boston, I was a monitor in that case. And in all these cases, what I'm asked to do is to verify that the company is presently responsible, has the management systems to act lawfully and ethically. I might note, just as a side note, that I got started in all of this, again, way before I was a Massachusetts resident, because I was hired by late Senator Kennedy on his Judiciary Committee staff. And he had me look at sentencing issues, which in turn had me look at corporate sentencing issues. And back in the '90s, I was working for a federal agency that developed the first model for a compliance program. And basically, the idea was that, as we were talking about earlier, that bad things can happen at good companies, but good companies have systems to make sure they don't happen. And so the model says, if a company has a criminal issue, the penalties will vary dramatically depending upon whether it has instituted these systems to manage ethics and compliance. And what happened after that was established in '91 was that a whole bunch of agencies, government entities, adopted basically the same policies, that we want to be able to look at companies when they have issues in terms of whether they've tried to prevent and detect those things, or whether they didn't. So EPA and all the agencies I mentioned before. Mass Housing has yet to adopt that standard, but I'll bet you in time they will, because this is a trend that's been sweeping through not only the federal government, but the states. Massachusetts has now required, started requiring pharmaceutical companies to have these programs. So it's already started to happen in Massachusetts. I will note that, sort of, again, talking about my own credentials, that I have two current clients that are construction companies. One of them, like Mill Creek, is based in Texas. And a third one is privately held. So point one is, the town has an interest in having a responsible partner and an entity that can be trusted in a neighborhood. Point two is, an expert has come forward. And point three is that the expert has presented an analysis, which is researched and documented, 30 citations or so, and found that, under this mainstream set of metrics, that Mill Creek does not meet the standard. And I, by the way, just again, as a side note, I'd note, in terms of mainstream, I -- the Ethics and Compliance Officer Association, which is the professional association of in-house people who manage compliance and ethics in companies, is based, as I mentioned last week, in Waltham. And I checked, and among their 3,100 members, 1,300 members, 31 are from construction and development companies. So Mill Creek is an outlier. And so based upon that, the last point is simply that Mass -- the town should, or I'm asking the town to request, is that Mass Housing look at this, to see, coming back to the first two points, that Mill Creek has the infrastructure, the management systems that are consistent with contemporary business standards, to manage compliance and ethics, and secondly, can demonstrate that it has a track record of acting lawfully and ethically. So I prepared some, you know, some notes that could be used in a letter, if that would be helpful. I'll leave those behind in case they are, but they -- my intent was to sort of track what I've just outlined. So with that, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else for Citizen Speak? Mrs. Swenson.
Hello, my name is Dani Swenson, and I wanted to thank you for including some of the neighbors and Fuller Village in the letter-writing process on the Milton Muse, during the Milton Muse comment period. I've been to more meetings than I care to count on this topic, and so many people have told us, including a significant meeting with Tom Gleason, the head of Mass Housing, and Greg Watson at Mass Housing. We were able to sit down with them for two and a half hours. And we mentioned a lot of the issues that are in these letters. And in that meeting, we were told on numerous occasions to definitely note these things in the letter, to get these issues on record, so that they can address them during the comment period. This is our time to get these things in. Some things perked their interest more than others, and I can share that with you if I could just sort of go through this current letter. I know there's been a lot going back and forth. I just thought I would just start. On page two, I noticed, in the most recent version, historical resources was crossed off, and I just wanted to say that I do think it's important that the town comment on the enormous, unique historical nature of the site, or even note it. I know I gave a huge binder, and that's kind of hard, but I could certainly do a quick synopsis. The guidelines say the historic nature and preservation of the historic nature of the area and the site are important. So I would revisit that question of including that. A lot of these things aren't quite my expertise. But I noticed on page four, at the bottom, it says, however, it is a very long walk to that station. And at the end, in the conclusion that was crossed out, it specified that it's over a mile. I would add that specificity here, especially if you're going to take it out later, because that is significant. I know it sounds like a minor tweak, but I think these sort of details do make a difference. So at the very bottom of page four, it's actually, I think, in the last sentence, however, it is a very long walk to that station, I would specify that it's a mile. Is that significant? Because if you read over the application, it's really -- that half-mile, mile is significant. Let's see. I noticed on page five that existing infrastructure was taken out. The developer chose the category of tapping into existing infrastructure, and the language that's been crossed out, I think it's significant, because it says in the Mass Housing application, existing infrastructure, it is stated that natural gas is available, it is not. So that is significant, because that's what the -- that's the pathway the developer chose to come into this. So to cross that out is of question to me. On page seven, I noticed that the stormwater section was entirely crossed out. The stormwater in this area is a significant issue for a number of reasons. One is because the way it's being constructed, I'm sort of giving you this description, but if you turn this around, if I could. So Brush Hill Road over here, Avenue A over here, Hem and Way Drive over here, is a hill. So Blue Hills is up here, coming down a hill. So if you can sort of imagine, then there's the Martian flood plant here. So this is a -- this is a local community private water supply down here in the Fallow Meadows. And if you have a hill, and you're not careful with the stormwater, you're affecting a water supply for various communities, Canton and a number of other communities. So you're also -- you have a lot of pavement, so you have a lot of buildings, you have a lot of pavement, you have a lot of grading, you have retaining walls. All of these things are new. So a stormwater system is especially significant when you're abutting town and private water supply. Also, within these bullets, there was snow removal. Snow removal will not only impact the wetlands, because if snow removal isn't handled right, you can't just push the snow into the wetlands, especially over pavement that's had cars and oils and chemicals and so forth. You can't just push it. So you need a plan, and that should be of concern at this, even at this stage, it should be of concern. So that would impact the wetlands, pavement runoff. And then, snow removal is significant, because they're asking for a waiver for parking. So you usually have two parking spaces per unit, they've asked for a waiver of 1.65. There's no on-street parking on Brush Hill Road. We don't really see a place where they're going to put snow. That's going to take even more parking away from this area. So now you're getting into not only wetland issues, but you're getting into safety issues for Brush Hill Road and on-site. Also, in this stormwater system, all these bullet points, there was something mentioned, anti-icing plan. So now you're talking about chemicals, salts, that would have an impact on the wetlands. So I, as we were told by Mass Housing themselves, these are the kind of things that you want to get into them. And then, even if they were to do a site approval, they may note some of these as site is approved upon plans and, you know. But we need to get that in now, so that Mass Housing can respond with those facts. If we don't give those facts to Mass Housing, they can't specify them as important to Mass Housing. They wouldn't know unless we told them. And let's see, okay. Page eight, the archaeological issues. I think some significant language was lost, and it, if there was a verification question, I've given the phone number for the sources that gave me the actual language, so a quick three-minute phone call could give you the verification from the experts themselves. But the language that's really needed there, the current sentence says, "The proposed development is in proximity to unknown archaeological dig site." What it needs to say is, "The proposed development is in, within a half-mile of three significant The next note is also at the bottom of page eight. I do remember during the meeting with Mass Housing, the design guidelines, they did refer to these, and this is of importance to them. The sentence that was crossed out at the bottom of page eight is a fact that's very important. The sentence that was crossed out is, "The current zoning for proposed site is Residence AA, two-acre zoning. The abutting Fuller Village is Residence D2, zoning for the elderly or handicapped, and must be a nonprofit." This is a fact that has been getting lost in the discussion. When the developer comes for a site walk, or shows various stakeholders, they want to compare it to Fuller Village, when it, when you actually should be comparing it to the zone that you're actually in, and the neighborhoods that you're actually in. It's a fact that I think is important, and it's a fact that it's going to have a huge impact on Avenue A and Hem and Way Drive neighborhoods. And page nine at the top, the sentence that's crossed out in the paragraph at the top, "The character of the existing buildings in the proposed development site is very large, single-family homes, screened from one another by large areas of vegetation." This, again, is a fact that keeps getting lost in the discussion. And the water system, a couple of things were taken out, and it's another example of why the existing infrastructure is not adequate. And again, the developer checked off that the pathway into a community, or this community that they've chosen, is that they're tapping into the infrastructure that's already available. And the same at the top of page 10. And then, I'm not sure why the zoning comments were completely removed. On page 12, in the middle of the first paragraph on the conclusion, it says, "The public safety issue of putting over 600 new residents into an area with no sidewalks is not safe." That was removed, and this was an issue that was of concern to Mass Housing. Mass Housing cared about this, and told us access, especially emergency access. And there is some, as those of you who've come on a site walk, you can see Brush Hill Road is not safe for walking a mile to the nearest train station. So emergency and safety was of paramount concern, especially, very much at this site Also, vegetation impacts, potential drinking water source impacts, and habitat issues were left out of the conclusion points, and those -- and also, historical significance is supposed to get taken into consideration, and that was removed. And finally, the secondary access question of Hem and Way Drive as an emergency access point has been discussed. And we wanted to get something in to explain that Hem and Way Drive is a private way, and that is not an automatic assumption, and that just can't happen. It's a private way, it's deeded. It has access for 13 single-family homes, and it has from the beginning. These deeds have been in place. And we can certainly --
Is that inclusive of the homes that are being sold?
One of the homes has single-family access to Hem and Way Drive.
Which ones?
The Shellers, the Shellers closest to the river.
The other two have no right of access.
The other two have no right of access. One has an access to Avenue A, and the other has an access to Brush Hill Road. So to go from -- and emergency access, of course, in a true emergency, if a fire truck needed to use a private way, or, let's say, for instance, Tom, your house was on the other side of the development. Say your house is right here. And let's say the development, the two fire hydrants here weren't working, but the fire hydrant on the other side of your house is working. In a true emergency, they could run a firehouse through your front door, out your back door, right through your kitchen. They could do that in a true emergency access. But they can't create a gate through your house and allow the fire department to come there three to five times a week. It's entirely different to create a gate --
And say that that's their plan.
And say that that's their plan. It's a different -- this is private. Please hold on. Those are my quick reactions. I got this 4:30, so that's my quick read on this.
Thanks. We'll get to this later on, anyway.
Okay. Thank you so much for your time and consideration.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Debra.
Deborah Felton, town meeting member of Precinct Two, and executive director of Fuller Village. And as you know, we are represented with the neighbors by attorney Jay Tullman, so a lot of the input you're getting is from attorney Tullman. And I was also at that, I just want to reiterate, I was at that meeting with Mass Housing, and they did stress time and time, is to give them everything now, everything that the town or that the neighbors are concerned about should be submitted to them now, at this, right now, at this application process. I just want to invite the public to a site walk. We're going to walk around the site. It'll be hosted by the neighbors on June 1st. It's a Saturday at 10:00 AM, so that people can become aware of this development on Brush Hill Road. I've already heard from a realtor in town that this is really going to have a large effect in town, that houses on Brush Hill Road are moving very slowly. People are watching, very concerned about this. And I want to give everybody an opportunity to really see what the proposed site looks like.
Where will you meet, Debra?
We'll meet right on Brush Hill Road. People can park at 1372 Brush Hill Road, that's Fuller Village, and then walk across the street. They should be very careful, because cars do come flying up Brush Hill Road, and it is very narrow. But we will meet across the street from there. Thank you.
Anyone else for Citizen Speak? No, Peter? Okay. All right, we'll move on to, come back to that on number seven. Right now, we're on number five. I'd like to invite up Joe Lynch, John Thompson, Bill Gunther, the approval of the Wendell Park Stormwater Grant.
I'm Joe Lynch, Director of Public Works. John Thompson, Town Engineers to my right, and Bill Gunther, environmental scientists from the Ponson River Watershed Associations to my left. I'm here for, purpose of introduction, introducing these two gentlemen, who are going to give you more information. But in an overview, I'm here specifically to speak of the partnership that has been forged between NEPR and the Town of Milton, and particularly the DPW, an engineering department of the Town of Milton. They've been involved in stormwater initiatives and watershed protection initiatives for down there a decade. That relationship, partnerships, involved various watershed protection measures, various studies that have been undertaken, stormwater runoff analysis, looking at water quality. It resulted in projects, and many of those studies and projects have been partnering in grant applications, which is what they're eventually going to be talking about this evening. In the general sense, right now, Town of Milton and NEPR is completing a study for best management practices for stormwater, and a BMP, best management practice. In essence, is a device, this is a structural BMP, is a device that can be used to enhance water quality by taking normal runoff from an urbanized area and pretreating it before it finds its way into the water column as runoff. That study is just about complete now, and it has opened the door for a grant opportunity called a 390 Grant, which basically uses Federal Clean Water Act money and funnels it through the state DEP, Executive Office of Environmental Affairs. It makes it available to eligible communities who are taking stormwater enhancement, water quality enhancement, seriously. It's a competitive process, and we have found in the past that partnering together greatly improves the odds of proving success, and we're pretty darn certain that the partnership we have right now in the grant application we're about to embark upon is going to be a successful one as well. Why is that important? Because Annual Town Meeting, Article 27, authorized the expenditure of $300,000 for the purposes of making improvements to the town's drainage or stormwater system. This is not a $300,000 project. But within the context of that article, it allowed for the town to issue bonds, accept gifts, apply for one or more grants, and to spend the money from those grants. And we need your authority to make the application for the grant that we're about to embark upon. And that's item one that we're looking for. These gentlemen will go into more detail of what the project entails, and why we think we're going to be successful. And in that application, the last piece is a letter of support from the landowner, which in this instance is the Town of Milton, which in this instance is the Board of Selectmen, basically supporting the application. So we're looking for authorization to expend funds under Article 27 for the grant application, and we're looking for a letter of support in making the grant application. I glossed over the fact that this is a 60% funded grant, meaning the total cost of the project, 60% funded under the grant monies. 40% of the project value is local dollars supplemented with in-kind, the value of in-kind services. So in essence, if this were a $100,000 project, or, you know, let's say it was, you know, $40,000 local dollars versus the 60 from the state, so we're looking to leverage that outside money, and really embark upon a project that we would probably use our own money on anyway, so it, in essence, frees up that additional money for us to do other projects elsewhere. I think that's a pretty good overview at this point. John and Bill, I'll step back, let John and Bill take the floor and give you the details of what we're looking at. Again, similar in the application process, the finite details will flush out as the project evolves. But there's plenty of information there to give you an example of what we're asking for, and actually, something that you probably are all familiar with, of what we've done elsewhere in town. Okay?
John?
Good evening. Joe really hit on most of the points already that I sort of wanted to --
Joe really hit on most of the points already that I sort of wanted to go through before I sort of turned things over to Bill. One thing I did want to point out as well is that we've already, over the past, I think, eight years or so, we've already undertaken two other grants like this, 319 grants, joined up with NEPR and had a successful project. One was in the construction of bio retention cells along Pine Tree Brook, sort of behind the high school in the Guile Road area. And another was the installation of tree filter boxes along Brook Road and Lincoln Street in town. And I I sent around a few pictures actually of that project because this is ultimately what we think we're we're going to be looking at under this grant application is the installation of more tree filter boxes in the vicinity of Wendell Park. So we'll have that to 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 take a peek at in a second. And I think that was it. I'll turn it over to Bill now, who can sort of talk about the grant in a little bit more detail.
Sure. I'll give you kind of a stepwise approach to where where we've come from and where we are now and why we're before you. As Joe mentioned, we we partnered on a grant under the 604B program and that was a planning grant, which was a grant that was fully funded by state money to do a survey of the Town of Milton and look for the best places to put these structures that clean stormwater. Under that grant, we looked at over 40 different locations, made recommendations for over 60 different individual BMPs throughout the town. And from that, we narrowed it down to the top 10 locations that we thought were the best for for cleaning water and with the best opportunity of looking forward at putting in an application under the 319 program. From that top 10, we then whittled it down further to a top three and we then, with the help of a consulting engineering firm, Partners Environmental, we got our top three locations and then what rose to the top was this Wendell Park location. If you look at the the map that John John provided, I can give you a little bit of background on why we think this is our best location in the Town of Milton. So as you see, there's this small tributary to Pine Tree Brook that runs directly through this neighborhood. At the eastern side of the the piece of paper, you'll see a small, what looks like a ponded area and that's more of a wetland area. And that is kind of the feeder to this tributary. The entire length of this tributary has a system of 21 different inlets where water goes, instead of going into what normally would be a catch basin system and then piped into the brook, there's no catch basin in in the Wendell Park area. There's literally just an open pipe from the road to the tributary. So any stormwater that runs off that roadway doesn't even get the added benefit of suspended solid removal from a catch basin. It literally is discharged with no treatment whatsoever into this tributary. So from that perspective, getting treatment on this entire section of tributary that runs into Pine Tree Brook was very advantageous to us. The second thing is, we could use smaller, tight practices like the tree filter boxes to treat the entirety of this area. And lastly, we felt that this, a project of this magnitude would be an excellent candidate for funding funding under the 319 grant program. When we started the 604B survey of the town, it was the idea that from the the fruits of that labor would then be taken to the 319 grant process. That rug was sort of taken out from under us when the Massachusetts MS4 draft permit came out and MS4 is municipal separate sanitary storm sewer? M and four S's. Under that draft permit, it was going to make obligatory putting these types of types of structures in to clean stormwater and this stuff would therefore not be fundable under that program. That permit is now not final and DEP has sort of backtracked from that, understanding that they have funded all these surveys of different towns, Milton being one, and they weren't seeing the return on their investment. So they have opened that window again to us now and it is our understanding that this is going to be the last opportunity to apply for these funds and get 60 cents on the dollar essentially to put these sort of improvements in. Once that permit becomes final, this stuff will just be the obligation of the town to consider and to and to pay for.
Is, so my understanding, the water is actually cleaned before it actually gets into the watershed system?
Correct. So the water.
It filters right through the box?
Yeah, it filters right through the box. So you get you get treatment for bacteria, which is a particular concern in the Ponson River Watershed Association, the Ponson Watershed in general. You also get nutrient uptake, so the the plantings that are in the box take up phosphorus and nitrogen.
You can test that?
Yes. Well, it has been tested by the companies that produce these boxes. They they have third-party testing that's been done to verify the pollutant removal efficiency of the units. Off the top of my head, bacteria is anywhere from 60 to 90% removal of the one-inch water quality volume. Nutrients like phosphorus and nitrogen would be 75 to 90%.
What kind of a filtering syst, is it sand or is it is it a filter?
The media, so the media depends on what your application is. For for our purposes, we would favor a bacteria-friendly media. They have a media that's specifically engineered to to treat bacteria better than other media. But yes, essentially, essentially, it's it's a porous dirt that allows the the plants to grow, but also the, you know, microbial communities to do the other treatment processes.
So it's similar to like filtration system in a swimming pool?
Yes, absolutely. And it's a closed system.
Right.
That's an important thing to note as well, that there's there's actually a sort of a bypass system that's set up in these tree filter boxes as well. So in the case of a, you know, a torrential rain, it's, you know, water can still find its way to the brook without, you know, the the tree filter box acting as a, you know, a sort of a blocker essentially. So in in the heavy rains, water can still pass freely by the tree filter box and get into the brook.
How many of these would you be installing on Wendell Park?
At this time, just using, you know, our initial estimates, it looks like approximately six.
The four feet deep, you got to dig some some pretty deep holes, right? They're four foot deep?
Correct. We have done some, we have done some test pitting in the area too, just to sort of look at the soils. And so potentially, there is a, there's some opportunity under the grant as well to look at doing some other types of 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 treatment as well to the stormwater.
And would would the infiltrated water then just filtrate into would put into this into the river next, into the brook?
Exactly. It essentially makes.
So it's infiltrated and then it's.
Makes its way through the media and then gets piped piped into the brook.
I think it's great. Environmentally friendly, making us all safer.
Now, would these be new trees going into these tree boxes or existing?
Uh, yeah, essentially, actually, I think the the trees might even be part of the, they might come as a unit in the box.
In the box, okay.
But yeah, typically, they're small, one, one to one and a half inch caliber trees. And some, I think some species are better than others. I know we've gone with Bradford pears in the past.
Yep.
So it basically line the street?
Right.
Okay.
I will propose a motion to approve a joint application between the Town and the Ponson River Watershed Association to the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection for a grant funding to install tree filter boxes along Wendell Park.
Motion's be made in second. Any further comment?
It sounds like a great project.
Great. Could we also ask additionally that the Director of Public Works be the authorized signatory for the for the grant paperwork for this project? Just to.
Sure.
Yes, that's fine. Sure.
Yep. So in addition to the motion to, now, what was, what did we want to do? We wanted to.
Authorize the DPW to sign the grant paperwork.
Okay. Okay, so acting on behalf of the town, the DPW Director would be authorized to sign any grant applications and proposals.
Motion's the friendly amendment?
Yes.
As we made in second. Any further discussion? On the favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
All right, next up is number six, the approval of the Parkway Methodist Church Mission Walk. Anyone here from the Methodist Church? Okay. What's the motion?
I'll make a motion to approve a request from Parkway United Methodist Church to use the town streets and ways for a mission walk that will take place on Sunday, June 2nd, 2013, 1:00 p.m. to 3:00 p.m. from 158 Blue Hill Parkway to the Yon and Rankin back.
Second.
Motion's be made in second. Any comment? On the favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Number seven is the discussion on the Milton Muse Comment Letter. Remainder of the meeting will be discuss this letter. Do you want to come up, John? Town Council John Flynn? And Bill Clark, our town planner?
Now, to be clear also, we are going to, we are going to take this up again on our June 6th meeting as well?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Now, I just drafted a quick overview, you know, for the public when it started and where we are right now. Mm-hmm, okay. So in June and July of 2012, 22 acres of land on Brush Hill Road and Hemmon Way Drive was optioned by apartment developer Mill Creek Development Trust LLC. 19 acres are in Milton and three acres are in Canton. The Canton acres will not be built on for development. Mill Creek Residential Trust LLC is a spin-off the nationwide developer of real estate, Trammell Crowe, a publicly traded company on Wall Street. At the end of 2012, Mill Creek LLC had a portfolio of 9,000 apartments nationwide. Their goal is to set is to have 15,000 by the end of this year, according to their website. They've proposed 276 apartments at Brush Hill Road in a 40B development. 25% or 69 units will be affordable. It'll be a lottery system to qualify income and asset qualifications. Mill Creek has filed for a site plan approval with the quasi-state agency Mass Housing Finance, who will finance the construction of the affordable units if approved and the pro forma data works. The project is about $60 million. Cambridge Savings has committed $46 million pending approvals and Mass Housing Finance has committed to $16.1 million pending approvals. On top of that, Mill Creek will receive a $4 million development fee. I'd like that. The Selectmen asked for and received an extension from Mass Housing Finance on the comment period on the site plan until June 10th. This is why we're here, to discuss our comments. We received input from several departments and boards, including the police, fire, environmental inspection services, and many more. Mass Housing Finance welcomes comments from the public also. If Mass Housing Finance approves the site plan, then the developers will file for what we call a comprehensive permit with the Milton ZBA, Milton Zoning Board of Appeals, at which time the Board of Selectmen and the Planning Board will have no more control of what happens, but will have some citizen input. If the Milton ZBA does not approve the application, then Mill Creek will appeal that decision to the Mass Housing Appeals Board. And in front of us, we have the letter that was drafted by by John Flynn, our town council. And if pleases the board, I think we should, we should go through it paragraph by paragraph and discuss what we want to put in and what we want to take out.
I guess, John, as I, as I look through, I, just to understand, because the town had Anne Marie, Bill, and, you know, various people.
Multiple, multiple.
Have had input, including, including Attorney Talaman, who's been hired by Fuller Village, has had some input into this.
Yes.
And a letter was drafted, then it was sent to your office for further review and what we're looking at now is kind of that edited letter. So so I guess to get some kind of understanding as to why some of the things were taken out and why other things were put in would be very helpful.
I think we should start with site access, John?
Even before that, in just a very, very quick, the very first page, why do we scratch out pursuant to Massachusetts General, Chapter 40B, Section 20? Was that just not germane to?
Mr. Chairman, first of all, let me introduce myself to the public. My name is John Flynn. I'm an attorney with Murphy, Hesse, Toomey, Lehman, and Quincy. I am Milton's Town Council and we are representing the Board of Selectmen on this matter. The reason for that deletion, a couple of reasons actually, technically speaking, this, Chapter 40B, Sections 20 through 23 are more relevant to the process for seeking the comprehensive permit. We're not quite there yet. This is a deter, this, the letter that the Board of Selectmen received is a copy of a letter where the developer is seeking a determination by the Mass Housing Financing Agency that this site is eligible, that the project is eligible for funding, and that's a precondition before they can even file. Technically speaking, that letter and your opportunity to comment is pursuant to the Mass Regulation, so I just took it out. It's not fatal, it's just.
Okay.
Didn't think it was, it's superfluous really. It's more relevant if and when we get to the comprehensive permit stage.
Okay.
One other thing that you took out, John, was attachments from residents. And I guess the residents are submitting their own separate filings, so there's, I guess there's no need for us to attach them because the residents are submitting their own responses.
Yes, as I understood the process and it's certainly the board's decision, with all the input you are seeking and have received, you may adapt your letter to some of the comments, but it seemed to me that your filing is from the Board of Selectmen and if residents, for whatever reason, either because they disagree or feel there are additional issues, wish to file separately, but yes, that's why the deletion was made.
Next paragraph, I thought had some good clarifications.
The next paragraph before public safety?
Just like, well, two paragraphs right before it. I think the paragraph right before public safety, the question was, why were we deleting the reference to historical resources?
The reason for that is.
Now, we say historical, we also say archaeological, historical, is that pretty much what that means?
Well, they're.
Are they not synonymous?
Not fully.
Yeah.
They are, there are some different aspects to both. The historical resources, one, is a difficult subject, but in my opinion, we should be careful of that because this, the reason for most of these edits were to try to tailor your comments to what we feel are the applicable regulations. Unless the, an issue like historical resources is carefully crafted, it's really not clear that it's relevant to what's going on now. I think it's more relevant to the if and when you get to the comprehensive permit stage. They're supposed, this agency is supposed to make a determination whether this site is generally appropriate, whether for the proposed design. And I think you have to be careful about something like this because remember, Chapter 40B is called anti-snob zoning and you have to really word this carefully because if you don't, it looks as if you're saying, this is not appropriate because we have, you know, luxurious estates up there or we have historically significant. That alone is not a factor why a 40B development is not appropriate for a site, I think. And that's the reason why it's there, but it's the board's decision and if you feel that's relevant, by all means, put it in.
Just on that note, John, it seemed to me, I I pulled the regs, or actually Anne Marie sent them around, but I think you're looking at Section 4C?
Yes.
Okay, so things that you took out is because they don't fall into the category of Section 4C?
Yes, in my opinion, yes.
Okay.
There are, just for the record, Mr. Chairman, the findings that this outfit is supposed to make are based on a state reg. It's called 760 CMR 56.04. It's called 760 CMR 56.04. There are several categories of, several areas they're supposed to address with their find, findings. Three or four of them have to do with their financial position, are they financially qualified to do it? Is it financially feasible, those kinds of things? One has to do, do they control the site? And the chairman mentioned a purchase agreement that was signed. And, and one has to do with what's their status? Are they a nonprofit? Are they a limited dividend organization? So, most of the factors are more, who are they? What is their financial capability for the project? And how are they set up? And do they meet the housing subsidy requirements? The two, there are two that are more directed to the site, which I think is more the focus of the letter that the board has been working on. One is subsection C that Ms. Conlon referenced, and I'll just read it. That the conceptual project design is generally appropriate for the site on which it is located, taking into consideration factors that may include proposed use, conceptual site plan, and building massing, topography, environmental resources, and integration into existing development patents. Parentheses, such finding would supporting reasoning to be set forth in reasonable detail. Close parentheses. The other, which is subsection B right before it, is that the site is, Pro's project is generally appropriate for residential development, but that's focused more on, what have we done so far? And in its worst case, it's more looking at, how close are you to your 10%, that type of thing? Have you gone into 40-hour type things? Have you gone into exclusionary zoning? So, yeah, Ms. Conlon's question is, my comments are primarily directed to address subsection C that I just read, yes.
Which makes sense, reading the reg. When I was reading it this afternoon, the only question is, you know, Denny Swinson's mentioned was that Mass Housing said we should mention things like historical resources and archaeological resources, so I'm wondering if we want to, we have a couple more meetings, this isn't due until June 10th, whether we want to take another look at that and consider whether we should file a response that is broader than what section C would allow? If it's not in our, if it's not against our interest to do that.
You certainly can, but, and we'll certainly be guided by what the board wants, but at least for the first draft or the first revision that I worked on, and I was trying to tailor it to the regs, you have to keep in mind that this process we're talking about now is preliminary to and different from the comprehensive permit process. So, a lot of the factors that you've heard comment on, in my opinion, are more germane to the comprehensive permit application. And at the risk of, I've had experience before where this agency or its predecessor has, in fact, made a determination that the project is eligible, but accepted a lot of the comments that the town submitted to them, but in a sense, the Housing Appeals Committee is free to ignore them. So, it really is not binding at all on the Housing Appeals Committee if and when, I'm jumping ahead. In those case, in that case in particular, the most recent one I'm thinking of, there was an appeal from a Board of Appeals decision, and you alluded to that earlier, Mr. Chairman. The appeal went to the Housing Appeals Committee. They, they said, "Thank you very much," but ignored the, the comments that were part of the eligibility letter. So, that's a long-winded way of saying, you absolutely can put it in, it doesn't track the regs. I'm surprised they made that comment, because they really are kind of apples and oranges, but there's certainly nothing fatal in doing it, and if you wish to do so, yeah, by all means, yeah.
Can you talk about the site access, John? About the two viable means of emergency?
That's a very important point, and I think it should be where first, right up front. It's one of the most important. I think it's essential, and I agree with the comment made earlier to perhaps refer to that in a little more detail in the conclusion also, yes. I think that's an excellent point.
Should we expand on this to address the private road issue? To, I guess, to preempt what the developer might say, if they haven't already said in their application, that a private road is available for use by emergency vehicles? Should we address that right up front?
The Hemman Way Road issue, yes, that was a good, yes, I think it makes a lot of sense to do that.
What is that one, though?
The point was made earlier, are you referring to the point that was made earlier in this meeting?
Yes.
That Hemman Way Road is a private way?
Yes.
And it isn't necessarily available to the developer for emergency access, and it might have been alluded to or represented. That's a, yes, that's part of this analysis, I think it's a-
Yeah, I mean, it would be obviously available to the town for emergency purposes, but not the developer per se.
Yes.
They specifically say in their application that they would not have their residents or visitors using those ways. That's why they're not on the plan. But where it goes across their property, they're not precluding the town, they're precluding their own residents in there. They're not going to upset any of the third parties that have rights to that. That's in their application.
Okay.
Certainly worth clarifying, yes, absolutely. As far as the particular changes, Mr. Chairman, I think that was part of your question. I think they're more just formalistic. Don't think there are any substantive changes. Well, just in the last sentence, I think we're just making a positive statement, the developer should.
But, John, if it's determined that they can't use that road, and they've just got one access point, right?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Well, that's good, depends on your point of view. For, for the town, we have the right to go over it, so it depends on how this board is, how the Mass Housing is looking at that. I mean, they can't prevent a fire truck or, unless they put up a gate, and that would be catastrophic.
Right.
They've never, on their plans, they have not identified any secondary access. They, they only discuss the one.
Right, so I think it's legitimate, it's legitimate concern, clearly.
If we start talking about it, we've added in, into the comments, that there need to be two. And whether that's two or three, is it one on each side? It's, we're making that comment, that using the existing driveways could be where those points are.
Yep.
They say nothing about it. They came out and said, "One entrance." We're adding that comment in.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Do they, and I know Peter Millington is here, do they have a right of way on this, on the road in front of your house, Peter?
That's a very good question. I, I'd get to determine. Avenue A has the same deeds and covenants, very similar to Hemman Way, as I've checked on, and Avenue A has the same private ways, single-family access. You only have one house in the middle. The Bishop, William Morris's house is in the middle here. That is the only house on this development, I'm sorry, in this site. These are three houses. This has access to Avenue A, single-family. It's like six houses here, so it's six, it's a shared way, it's eight to 12 feet wide, 14 feet wide. Country road, that's not constructed to handle ladder trucks, or there's no, you know, ways to turn around a fire truck. This is the, the Scheller house here, they have a single-family access to Hemman Way Drive. The house that's here has, has access to Brushhill Road. So-
So, the front house doesn't-
276 units and, and is, is very different, and to suggest that, well, this is all, so there's access.
So, it's unclear, it's unclear who has a right of way?
No, this, there's only 13, 13 families have single-family access to this road. Six families have single-family access to Avenue A. That's it.
Okay.
So, this house has no right of access, property has, contained, part of the development has no right of access to either. This house has access to just this one, and that house has access to just this one.
Yep.
And, and just to clarify, certainly the town has the ability in an emergency to use anything, and, you know, you can, there are cases that say you can knock down a building to save lives, there's no doubt about that. What the, what the homeowners are saying with their council, having looked at the deeds, having looked at the law, is that the developer cannot have as part of its plan, emergency access over these five roads. Can the owner just use them as the exit?
All right, and I don't think we've really changed anything in those, I mean, those comments were really the same. The, the traffic one, as I read it, is basically the same. I mean, it's slightly reworded, but, but it really, I don't know that it's really changed the meaning of it.
I was wondering too, if we should say semi-rural rather than rural. I, I know this, a lot of people, someone else drafted this initially, but I wonder whether we should just make that change. Seems a bit of a stretch to say it's rural.
Brushhill Road itself?
I think it goes to the issue of zoning in that area. We made it double A because it is a rural area.
Okay, if it's rural under the zoning violation?
Yeah. It's two A zoning.
That was just a question.
Page number three?
Mr. Chairman, these points were good, very good, and one of the changes I made, or we made, my office was to move a couple of the bullet points in here, like the next two scorecard items, because they seem to relate to traffic and to emphasize the point. But you're right, Mr. Hurley, I, there was no intention to change the substance of this, it was more just to try to focus it. This is a very strong point too, in my opinion.
Which one?
The, the whole point about the, the volume of traffic, the semi-danger, the intersections nearby that already have issues, and will probably be overburdened by this, all of that, I thought was a good, so I just, we just moved them together to try to have them follow that first part of the public, the traffic section, just to put them into the traffic section.
Okay, then.
On page four?
Does that take away the issue that although the area has been studied multiple times? We have all these studies that are saying that have noted that the traffic there is already an F.
Why can't we include some of those studies in here? Just as biographical information?
I, I did, but-
Do you mean the actual studies, Mr. Hurley, or reference to them?
Reference to.
Well, either reference to, or just as an appendix, just to have them there, or at least a, at least the summary page, I assume these studies have a, have a summary page to them that kind of-
Some do, some are, the, the CTPS one from 2001 does. The CTPS study from 2011 is about the whole intersection and series down there?
Mm-hmm.
That's about 15 pages, 20 pages tops.
If you put it in as appendix, you know, I don't think it incorporated into the body of the-
Okay.
And then just refer to it, so it's there, somebody- I mean, some of the stuff I, you did, I agree, you know, making more bullet points so that the person can just read them, but then maybe flesh it out in a later section if, if somebody wants to get more detail.
Well, I think it's a good suggestion to add back in a reference to them, but be careful how it's worded, because this one, it obviously wasn't the intent, but this one could be misinterpreted to say, "Well, why didn't you, you Milton do anything?" You know, okay, you've had three or four studies, that's not what we're talking about, but, you know, someone who disagrees with this analysis might say, "Well, that's your problem." You know, you've studied it to death, but it's the same as what-
Although to a large degree, we haven't done anything because it's state roads.
Yes, yes.
The state road, that they're layout, not us.
Well, but we mentioned other intersections too, you know, Brushhill Road, no, that-
No, in the Ponse Valley Parkway State.
That, that becomes the biggest problem, is every time you turn around up in that area, you bump into a state road, that you're gonna have to do something with it.
Sure, we'll put the reference back in, sure.
Did we spell out too what CTPS means? I don't know what that is, it's probably a planning term, Bill?
Central Transportation Planning Staff.
Oh.
It's part of the MPO, the Metropolitan Planning Organization. It's their staff.
Well, the recipient of this letter will probably know that, but we might want us-
It's a regional, right, it's a regional, Boston region's-
Yes.
Main traffic people.
The public transit part, again, no, no major concerns. I, I do agree with taking out the, as I'll not give them the, the issue may be resolved by corporate discussion between the Ponse Valley Transit Management Agency, so I kind of agree that should be out, my offer to them.
Yes.
But, what about the specifically stating the distance to Reedville? I think that is probably good.
If you take, it's a very long walk, comma, 1.3 miles, comma, to the station on roads with no sidewalks?
Yes.
Yes, absolutely. Joe had made that comment on a follow-up email on one of the speakers tonight, yes, I agree with that, that's very important.
No sidewalks, no bike path.
Now, getting back to the historical, my only, the only, the historical thing that might be relevant here is, and staying away from the snob zoning aspect, would be Polly Wakefield, that, I mean, that just is a historic, absolutely historic site, and what impact might a development of this size have on, on just the character of that site, because it's, it's used to have, you know, students come there and, you know, look at everything they, you know, shame to say, I haven't been there enough to know what they actually do there, but, but it's a beautiful site.
So, where are you at, what page are you at, Tom?
That was the, the scratch out of the reference, the historical on, on the first page.
Oh, right.
That one we'd have to be careful about, though, because, but sure, we'll put it back in, but, you know, there's a counter argument to that, well, you've got Polo Village, you've got Curry College, and why is this any more of a-
Well, yeah, 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 except this is even closer proximity.
Yes, yes, all right.
In the site hardening, John, why did you take out the, the police officer ratio?
For discussion purposes, again, I thought that that might be flipped around to say, "That's your problem, if you're on demand, you know, why don't you address it? If you, Milton, are understaffed, don't have enough police protection, that's something you should address." Does that mean you shouldn't have any more development in the town? So, it's more a discussion point.
You do say increased police protection will be required.
Yes, yes.
It's more general than specific, I think.
I avoided the specifics, but I just, I don't know, I was just a little concerned with being that specific, but-
I thought, Dennis, the site hardening question you mentioned, I thought was about this video surveillance, and I, when I first read it, I wasn't sure why that was in here, but, Bill, was there a reason that, I don't know if you're the person who included it or if somebody else did, is that?
I wrote it, but Richard asked for it.
Richard?
Wells, the police chief.
Oh, okay.
I, I think it's one that the development would do anyways, to put it in here, it's more an issue of the comprehensive permit than of the site plan.
It seems that we have enough issues covered in the next bullet point.
If you go to that, if you stay within that same one, the next one would be fire, and we run into the same issue, that because of that many people, we start having that many more calls, and that station is already at its max to take and put in more. So, realistically, we need to put in another bullet that takes into the, into account fire manning. We've got this three bedrooms, one bath in that one station, and they are one of the, if not the busiest station right now. It's something that, it's, any development that goes on up in that area, we need to start addressing that issue. So, it, it fits under, it fits under 4C.
So, you're proposing adding another bullet point here?
Yes.
Under police, to address fire concerns?
Fire. Fire concerns.
Okay.
I agree.
Okay. Now, why take out Milton is already dramatically below the formula for...
The manning level?
Yeah.
The what?
Sorry, I didn't hear that, Mr. Hurley.
Well, under the, the police crime, that bullet, we've taken out Milton is already dramatically below the United States Formula.
Because I thought that that would be, I think there's a strong...
I mean, we are getting in the point that, like you said, we're getting in the point that it will have an impact, but...
Yes, but I, in my opinion, something like this, the agency will say, well, that's your problem.
Yeah.
You're not addressing your needs now, you know, if you take that to a logical conclusion, you shouldn't have any more development, Milton, you guys have to figure out how to protect your citizens, and if they're otherwise eligible to...
Yeah, good point, okay.
Is that the same mentality with schools?
Depending on your point of view, yes.
Well, we built schools that were sufficient to handle what we appeared to be a stable community, and now you're adding potential more to it, but I think that's different than saying, our schools, when we built them, were adequate for the population, not below. So...
I'm not sure that that, I'm not sure you can use that rationale here, because we hired, we hired an architect to go out and run those numbers, and part of their job was to go and look at our build-out in town.
Yeah.
And we got bigger schools than we should have.
That's right, right.
So before we go saying, you know, we're already at that point...
Well, no, I'm not saying, I'm saying differentiating the schools from the police thing, in that our schools were built, like you're saying, to presumably handle what we believe to be...
Whatever the future was going to give us.
Reasonable growth, yes. Yeah, not a groundswell of growth, but reasonable growth.
Yeah, I agree.
I think we've captured it, just with the last sentence, increased police protection will be required, and then we added a bullet point about fire.
Fire, yes.
Yeah, okay, I agree.
And the gas line, why'd you take that out? On existing infrastructure?
I wasn't sure that it applies to this stage rather than the comprehensive permit stage. It seems to me they're not going to be permitted unless they have, whether it's oil or electricity or gas or whatever, and I just didn't see that it was relevant to the issues that this mass housing is be reviewing and determining whether the project is eligible.
They also said in their site description, under 1.3.5, they state that gas is available at Blue Hill F. So they're not saying it's available on Brush Hill Road, they're saying where it is, and that's way up at Blue Hill F.
Mm-hmm.
They're not, they just make a quick statement that...
And that's what you're pointing out, that it's 4,000 feet away.
I didn't put that in there, I believe.
Whoever...
That's a, it's a combination of two different people, I know it's, part of it...
4,000 feet's almost a mile. Is it a mile away?
It's not a mile. Part of it came from Joe Lynch, that the gas is not available on Brush Hill Road, and I'm not sure who came up with the 4,000 feet.
But, John, you said that this should be discussed during the comprehensive permit portion, isn't it?
That was my thinking, yes.
But if we get to the comprehensive permit, that means the site plan has been approved, correct?
No.
It's just that the site is suitable.
Suitable.
That the site is suitable, that's what I meant, yeah.
Right, no plan has been approved, just that the site is suitable, yes. You can certainly put it in, I just wasn't convinced that it was relevant to this stage of the proceeding.
I think you could put in the first sentence and leave out the rest. The existing infrastructure is stated, it is not, leave it there.
Well, couldn't we ask Joe Lynch to just verify the 4,000 feet of the distance?
You can actually give him exact footage if they want.
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay.
If Joe and somebody else combined to put this together, maybe we just go back to whoever else worked on it, get a little more detail.
I can actually come up with a number.
Okay.
You took out the whole archaeological issue?
I thought it was moved to later on.
Yes, it was moved to later on, it's on page eight, it's a more...
Condensed?
It's condensed, and one of the speakers asked that there be reference to three sites, if that's verified, absolutely, make that change, yes. Yes.
And again, as more biographical information or as an appendix, what about, I mean, Denny certainly did a, quite an extensive, you know, this frigging binder, which has a lot of useful information in it, I think, that perhaps incorporate as, as appendix?
Yes.
I only got a copy of that binder tonight, but is one of the sites, the Wakefield Estate? Three archaeological dig sites, is one of them?
No, there are three in Canton.
Canton.
Actually, I believe, they're saying within half a mile, so the others are in the Blue Hills, so they're not giving descriptions of where. I know one of them is Green Hill in Canton, one of them is Blue Hills, I forget the third, but it wasn't Wakefield.
I thought, I thought Wakefield did some type of archaeological work, but I don't, I don't know enough about the details about it.
They have found artifacts, I know, on that property, but I don't know if they've actually digged there or not.
Okay. Does the binder that Denny Swenson gave include the archaeological information?
Yes.
Okay.
It includes quite a bit. Some, you know, maybe you don't want to put the whole thing in here, but there are certain pieces of this.
Bill, is that something that you could, over the next couple of weeks?
Yeah, I actually...
Revise the archaeological section if we want to put it in?
Yep.
I thought I...
Sure.
Yep.
Yeah. Just a couple of things on environmental. The first, page six, the first sentence says, the Commonwealth's fourth sustainable development principle. I don't know what that is, is that defined somewhere, Bill, or is that a common planning reference?
No, the state has ten smart growth principles, and actually, we could take and put the smart growth principles as an appendix to the back.
Is that in chapter 40R, is that what you're referencing?
No, smart growth principles are, they're part of the smart growth toolkit put out by the state.
So maybe we should just reference that, or just explain where it's coming from? Maybe it's just a citation, because you actually include a quotation in here.
Would the board want that to be part of an appendix too?
Yep.
Fair enough.
We have a couple of references to the Milton Muse site, most of them across, I'd say the project, I think we just want to say the project site.
Yes, there are a couple of typos, that's me, I picked up one, most of them hopefully.
How about in paragraph 1, 2, 3, 4, there is no comment on having even reviewed the resource management plan for the ACEC? I think that means the applicant having reviewed this plan is, again, I'm not familiar with what this plan would be.
There's no comment in the application.
Where are we reading?
Paragraph four, environmental, on page six, it's a standalone sentence, paragraph.
Okay, yep.
I just wasn't quite sure what that sentence meant.
That they didn't indicate, that, yeah.
They didn't indicate that they've reviewed it?
Yes, exactly, yes, we can reword that.
And again, I, resource management plan for the ACEC, that might mean something to you, Bill, to me, not being an environmental lawyer, I don't know anything about it, so I'm, for whoever's reading this, presumably they're gonna know, but we might want to give a little more...
Okay.
...detail there, or attach it.
It's actually a good point, I wouldn't necessarily assume that they do know, when you get into areas like this, or environmental zoning, so it's a good point to do that.
Yeah, housing, but not necessarily environmental.
Yes, exactly. Mr. Chairman, when you asked before, some of the items were moved, because it just seemed to me to suggest that emergency access, traffic, public safety, environmental go up front, some of the others moved back, not that they're not important, but just seemed that priority was towards these items.
Anything more on environmental, or can we go onto wetlands?
Uh, yeah, I can go to wetlands.
Question I had on wetlands is, you and Marie said that this is, I don't know about this letter, but some of the materials have been submitted to the Conservation Commission. Do we know whether they've, or have they given us any feedback?
No.
Have they looked at this, or are they involved in any way with the preparation?
No, no. They were, the chairman has been given all the data, they have not had any filing with the Conservation Commission to date, they have not had an informal, they haven't had an informal discussion with the whole of the commission.
But is it appropriate at this stage for us to be getting input from the Conservation Commission?
Sure.
Yes. Mr. Chairman, I understand third-hand that the chairman is trying to organize a sidewalk before your deadline to comment, so at least they can have some basis for input. The chairman of the Milton Conservation Commission is trying to...
Has that been arranged?
I'm not sure, but he...
It wasn't as of last Saturday, because I was with him and asked a bunch of these same questions.
Well, I haven't gone on a sidewalk either, I know, because I'm new to the board, the two of you may have already gone on a sidewalk of the property, but...
But the June 1st one will be...
But the June 1st one, maybe we should notify the Conservation Commission about it, invite them to it unless they want to go on their own.
I'll talk to John.
Sure.
Right, I'll talk to John and see if we can get him sooner, not later.
Are we on, are we on with the wetlands?
Yeah, I had one other question on the wetlands. In the regs, it mentions that during, I think it's during the comment period, or maybe during, after the application is filed, I saw this somewhere today, that, oh, here, during the course of the review period, the subsidizing agency shall conduct a site visit which local boards may attend.
That's been done.
That's already been done?
They were notified too, yeah. All the boards were notified.
No, but has the, has the agency done this, the agency's done the sidewalk?
Yeah, we met with the agency.
Yes.
Okay, so, so they're familiar with the site, my question was whether we should submit any photos of the wetlands, or the stream, or anything to them in connection with this, or does it make any sense to do that?
Wouldn't hurt.
I would think of anything, well, yeah, the site, but also File Meadow itself, you know, and just, again, more, just what is File Meadow and, and, you know, how critically important it is to, you know, the environment and everything else, just, again, more, not in the body of it, but, but more...
I think that's probably part of the resource management plan for the ACEC.
Yeah.
Well, we might want to talk with Conservation about whether they want to submit, or whether they want to have photos taken for the application.
Well, see, they have, the commission can take and make comments, the commission does not get, where you have Selectment Planning Board moved aside, it doesn't necessarily move aside conservation, conservation instead of enforcing their local bylaw now only enforces the state bylaw. Now, they enforce the state bylaw in every project that they look at, but if it's your house, my house, they look at the local bylaw. In a case like this, the local bylaw gets usurped, and they only get to deal with the state issue.
Well, CBA apparently can look at the local and considering their comprehensive permit, but I suppose once it gets appealed, then it's just going to be the state anyways.
They can ask under that, but that doesn't mean that the applicant has to abide by it. One of the things that did happen here is during the informal discussion with the chairman of the commission, he said that it would go a long way if they had put in the 25-foot zone of non-disturbance. If you look at that plan, they did put in the 25-foot of non-disturbance. They haven't talked about much, much else, they haven't talked about any filling, they haven't talked about, you know, how they're going to put stormwater into it, into those wetlands, how those wetlands will wind up having to clean this area, but that's, that's up to John to, to deal with.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, can I just comment on that? That leads to a, probably a helpful comment here. This term comprehensive permit is envisioned to, at the risk of oversimplifying it, because it's not simple, to have some of a one-stop-fits-all, you know, in this, for local permitting, not for the state, as Bill said, not for the Wetlands Protection Act, but for local permitting, if you file for a comprehensive permit, the intent of the statute and the regulations is that, whereas before you might have had to go to three or four different agencies for local permitting, again, not state, that now it all comes to the conservation, to the Zoning Board of Appeals, and the Board of Appeals is in effect the permit-granting authority for all issues, so a Conservation Commission by all means can weigh into the Board of Appeals on environmental issues, the Board of Appeals could base its decision in part on environmental issues. It sounds kind of weird, but the appeal then would be under the comprehensive permit, even though you might be talking about wetlands issues under your local wetlands bylaw, you might be talking about Board of Health issues on, but it, it does not, the comprehensive permit statute, chapter 40B, does not trump state law or state regs, the two most common, I think, would be the Wetlands Protection Act and Title V, you know, for subsurface disposal systems. But again, for local permitting, the intent of the statute is that the Board of Appeals is your clearinghouse here, so that's why it's important that, when you, as Ms. Conlon read the regs, it's very important that all of your boards, all of your departments, boards respond to the Board of Appeals if and when we get to that stage, because they have, now have the jurisdiction to address those as well as the zoning issues, and they can craft a decision that's based in part upon input from your Board of Health, from the Conservation Commission, et cetera, recreation, you know, perhaps if there's some issue there, probably not, but, so that's really what the term comprehensive permit means, that you, instead of going to six different boards, now you...
You get it from one source.
Yes, but again, the jurisdiction's kind of expanded from what it normally is, so...
Right, right.
It's really critical that they get input from the other Conservation Commission in particular, Board of Health in particular, because it might be very helpful to them.
But even at this stage, don't we want their input at this stage?
Yes.
So that whatever...
Yes.
All these experts in different areas, wetlands is an important concern for this board, but Conservation Commission has more knowledge about it, I think, certainly than I do, probably than most of us do, so we want to get their input into what, if anything else, can strengthen our response in this section.
Yes, if they could participate in that sidewalk that you mentioned, on their own, yeah, very, very helpful, very important. Also, I think the board and one of the speakers mentioned File Meadow, I think it might be more of a summary here, but I will beef that up a little, so that the concerns about runoff into being areas of environmental concern are perhaps clearer than...
Right.
What, in deleting that, those other things, the intent wasn't to ignore them, it was to try to condense them into environmental and wetland, but by all means, we will clarify the fact that you need to understand what's going to be the impact upon areas like File Meadow for snow removal, stormwater runoff, those kinds of things.
Right.
Those are valid points, yes.
Okay, good.
But that will be a change we'll be happy to make.
Okay.
You also have a wetland, Katie?
Yes.
You eliminated everything in stormwater.
I'm sorry?
Stormwater, you eliminated everything.
Yes, but again, our attempt to try to put it into wetland and environmental, and we will look back at that and clarify it, so that these points aren't lost, they're just condensed into the other... condensed into the other areas.
Okay. Topography. It's pretty conservation. Really nothing there. Topography.
You didn't like my last sentence.
Conservation restriction, the issues of the necessary.
No, because on the one hand, you said it's expired and it was a little difficult. Somewhere else in the comments, someone said it's no longer in effect.
Right.
And in the archaeological, we're going to in, insert three.
Yes.
Yes. And perhaps add some Denny's.
And then a half mile of three, yes, yes, absolutely. And if it lends itself toward an appendix add as well would be fine.
Would it be worth a phone call to the Wakefield Estate, maybe by Bill, just to see whether they have any additional things to add to that since they have found artifacts at the Wakefield.
I'm pretty sure they have, yeah.
So, there may be something that they can add.
I mean, the artifacts have been more Paulie Wakefield things than.
I thought there was, I thought there were some artifacts that were dug up.
Maybe, but I know around that they have found.
I'll ask Marksman.
We should check, yeah.
The problem with, I mean, that property goes back into the 1600s.
The problem with these fields back here too is where it was a farm, things were turned over.
Right.
So, each one of these farms, even going into the Blue Hills stuff, where we have sites that when we wanted to put up the wind turbine, we were held back, those are the same areas that we had crops, where we had cows, we had all kinds of fence posts, but this was an area that we were told you can't touch now because it came under the Mass Historic. We'll go back and ask and see what Mark has for the Wakefield Estate.
Okay. Can you, can you talk about design guidelines, John?
Yes. The basic point, I think, is excellent in here. Zoning gets a little difficult because one of the factors in a comprehensive permit is that developer can override local zoning requirements and that's a heavy burden on a town to show why there's a compelling public interest to insist upon zoning. I won't use the word problem, but it's one of the obstacles you face when you're dealing with a 40B. So, I deleted the reference to the zoning. It's a little difficult to address it head-on. I thought the density arguments, the height arguments were good, the inconsistency with surrounding area. So, I think the basic point is excellent in there, but what I was trying to avoid in the revised draft is an emphasis on zoning per se because that's kind of a red flag.
That's a good point.
You know what I mean? That they see that, they'll misinterpret what you're saying and say, these people don't understand 40B, they're just saying it doesn't comply with our zoning. Well, that's why we have the statute because, but if, to make the point as best we can with specific factors like we have, I agree with 100%. But again, not to focus, just isolate it on zoning, whatever the zoning is.
I, I think the density, or at least contrasting Fuller Village's density with, with this is, is a relevant issue.
Very relevant. 14 and a half units per acre opposed to five and a half, was it?
Yes.
Yes, it is across the street and yes, it's different zoning, but the fact is, it's in the same neighborhood.
Right.
Can't split hairs and.
But it's clearly not anywhere near as dense.
And that's kind of hand-in-hand with all your traffic and all that too. These are among your stronger points, I think, but.
Well, is it, you know, Denny Swenson mentioned this sentence on page eight that was deleted. Would it make sense not to reference the Residence A A and Residence D and just refer to some of these points without, taking out the zoning references specifically and keeping in the fact that one of the abiders is a nonprofit geared toward elderly and handicapped housing or is.
I wasn't sure why that was relevant, though. I mean, that fact alone, so what?
We do keep in the density. Why can't I, by leaving it in there, you come up with the point of, why can't you do that across the street?
Yeah, no, that's what I'm wondering, whether there's any way to.
You don't want it.
Take out, so that it doesn't, as you said, so that it doesn't appear to be a zoning comment.
Well, I'm not sure which comment.
It's not a, I think you're saying, John, it's not relevant. I thought, I thought Denny Swenson was saying that, that mass housing thought that that was important.
I don't understand why they would because I think we're veering into saying what the zoning requires there. And I took a step back and said, so what? You know, but the Fuller Villages for elderly and handicap must be owned by a nonprofit. I'm not sure why that's relevant here. You can, you don't have to be that to get a 40B development. Maybe there's a point I'm missing, but.
I think we took on the density issue versus the zoning issue.
Yes, yes. Which I thought was strong.
I think it's much stronger.
Yeah.
That's the pertinent point is that we're increasing density.
I agree. Were you at that meeting with mass housing, Bill?
No.
It's just curious to me why they, why they thought it was, or why they represented that it was important if, if we don't think it is.
One of the concerns I have here is to be careful how we word this because remember, chapter 40B is called anti-snow zoning and I have, I hate to admit it, but I was practicing law when that statute came into effect. And the reason it came into effect was cities and towns in Massachusetts were finding ways to keep these kinds of development out. And they had all kinds of reasons, mostly bogus, and some of them would even tailor their zoning to keep developments of this size or of this nature out. So, the legislature was pressured into adopting this statute because I think they've determined we don't, there's never going to be this kind of development here. And although it's not the intention of the sentence, if, you know, if, if you're not careful with the wording, it's going to look like, okay, Fuller Village is okay, the houses with all the elderly and people are okay, but we don't want these, you know, inferior residents moving in across the street. And I think the way that you're addressing it is perfect with all the traffic safety and all that, but you have to be really careful on a word something like this because it could drift, be misinterpreted to say, we don't want this type of development, we don't want these type of people in here. And that's, again, that's not what's meant, but.
I was getting more, I mean, the end of the, as it's worded now, the last sentence talks about the proposal being out of character for any of this area of town. And it seemed that some of the sentences that were deleted went to that issue, which I, you know, 40B is not my area, but I thought that, I thought that you did look at what the surrounding area was comprised of and whether the proposal fits in with the type of structures that are in that, within a certain range.
Yeah, in terms of massing and height and everything else, yes.
And that's why I thought that sentence was okay within this context.
Okay.
But certainly if the board wants any of the other materials in, we'll put them in. Yeah, because one of the integration into existing development patterns, yeah, that's, again, if you word it properly, I think it's a legitimate point.
Maybe you can reword that, John?
Yes. But for example, the last strikeout on page nine there, I thought.
Character of these existing buildings.
The, well, open the view shed, you've got to be really careful about that. In other words, we don't want people to have to look at this, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, you can do buffering and all that, but yes, we will reword it, Mr. Chairman, but.
Except that their application makes comment to that. The reason they're putting up the townhouses where they're putting up, the reason they're leaving X amount of trees in certain areas is to not see the development that takes place in the back. That's their wording from the application.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. So, I don't know whether that was a deleted text. I don't know whether that came from you, Bill, or someone else, but is that why it was put in?
Yes. But I understand what John's saying, so we'll, we'll play with the wording and.
Yeah, to get, to get across the, the buildings in the back of very, five-story buildings.
I'll have to go back to find where I found the, the comment and highlight it and send it to John.
Yes, we can integrate that.
I, I thought the comment really was geared more at the vegetation than anything else, but.
If the water system, why do we do most of that?
One other comment, Mr. Chairman, those are the type of things that are typically addressed in a grant conditions, like it's not a fatality if it's visible, the board might typically say, well, build a smaller building, put a buffer vegetation or something. So, again, I didn't think at this stage that's fatal on that context, but we can certainly tweak the whole paragraph, emphasize these points.
Water system, John? Most of it is out again?
Most of the comments I felt were more about particularities of how are you going to build it? But the, the loop, I thought, was an excellent point, the failure to loop the water, that's a public safety opinion, a public safety point, and I thought it was very good. But the others, they just seem to me are more related to if and when you get to the point of a development, what might be a condition and how should you do hookups and that kind of thing. I didn't, didn't think it was necessarily relevant to whether the site is appropriate. But again, whatever the board wants is.
Is that the same rationale for the zoning comments?
Well, well, the zoning is more, yes, yes, that's the reason for those taking up. Because if, well, yes, that, that's why they're out because to the extent we focus on zoning, I think it's a, a non-starter. So, I'd be surprised if the mass housing finance had put that in. I mean, that, if there's one thing clear in 40B, it's that they can override zoning requirements. You know, you know how it works, they can build within setbacks, they can build higher buildings, they can build on undersized lots, all of that, you know? Unless you have a compelling public reason why the zoning should be enforced, so I, I just not see that as relevant here, but.
On that water one, where it talks about water supply by the main line of Brush Hill Road, it is a public safety and it is a water quality issue. And it does go back to the issue of the fire hydrants on private property. We do not historically check the fire hydrants on private property. So, it, it comes back to whose line is that going to be? And how do we determine that those hydrants do work? Because each one of these buildings will have, they, they all will be sprinkled.
Mm-hmm.
There will be extra hydrants throughout the project and I know they're on the plan, but they are, it's public safety and water quality. It, it does go back to the issue of they, they will be looped in the area as described in the, in the bullet that's left, but the other one is, because it's, this one's right, but this one, water supply by the main line, that one. It is a public safety and it is a water quality issue.
Yeah.
Because of the hydrants and the hydrants are on private property before they're not our hydrants per se.
Again, I, a possible argument there is that's more a development issue, if and when they get to the point of, for the board, it should be a condition of approval or a reason for denying, yes.
Okay.
Which is, it's a valid point, it's just that.
So, we understand why you took out all the zoning comments.
But what I will do, Mr. Chairman, is take a second look and see if any of them can be integrated into our other arguments without, you know, the red flag zoning, yes, absolutely.
I see you, you just condensed the conclusion into a few bullet points.
Yes, but there were some comments and it, at least one or two of them can be expanded, absolutely. I think the emergency access, some of the points you heard earlier, we'll integrate, yes, absolutely.
The points are excellent, yeah.
Yes, yes.
Okay. Comments on the last.
What was that?
Any comment on the conclusion? Actually, Denny mentioned that we should have the historical significance in the conclusion as well. I'm not sure if that's there.
Speaking of historical, Bill, did the Historical Commission get a copy of this or have they, has their input been solicited?
I don't know. I don't.
I think we should send a draft to the Historical Commission and let them weigh in on it.
I'll give copies of the application to the whole board.
I think we want to have as many people as possible.
Yeah, weigh in, I agree.
Eyeballing this and weighing in on it.
Y'all come up on a draft letter? Will you just ask that question?
The draft letter and, and any backup materials that might be appropriate.
So, the plan of action is to come back on June 6th, is that correct, Amory?
But to get us a draft before that.
To get us a draft before then, and then we'll approve it on June 6th or make further changes and then get it sent in by June 10th.
It will have to be finalized at your June 6th meeting because it does have to be into mass housing by June 10th, Mr. Chairman.
And we still will run drafts by Fuller Village and.
Yes.
Return to element.
And in the meantime, there's going to be a walk. Deborah, are you doing the walk?
June 1st.
Yeah. Are you going to show up, Katie, you should?
I'll go to the walk, yes.
Yeah, it's a very nice walk. Anybody else who has an interest in it should show up on June 1st.
The property is very impressive.
June 1st at 10 o'clock at Fuller Village.
Are you, are you walking in the property or are you walking around the property?
We're walking around the property.
You and the commission need to walk in the property. I'll get you, I'll talk to John Cairn and set up a sidewalk for you and for the commission. That needs to be in the property. I'll make it open to the Historic Commission at the same time.
We didn't actually walk in the property.
No, we walked the perimeter when we.
You walked inside the property.
Well, yeah, I guess we did, yeah.
You walked in it.
Yeah, we did. We walked across it.
You could go, you could go into any part of it with them.
What's the difference, Bill? I'm not sure what you're, what you mean.
You can walk in and, and see what's in the wetlands, like the commission would.
But you didn't do that.
Walk in and.
Well, for the most part, we stayed on the road, but we did, we did cut across in the back part of the property.
We cut across somebody's yard, yeah, into another road. Is that what you mean, Bill?
It's easier, yeah, but if they wanted to get into some of the other properties, they can. And that.
I think it's important to see that stream.
Right.
Back and forth, whether it's an intermittent stream or.
Yeah.
That's a, that's a big part of the environmental.
We may, we may want photos of the stream.
Oh, yeah.
I'll ask Mr. Cairn.
Ask Mr. Cairn.
He actually has, I, I know he's carrying a camera in his pocket because I was with him Saturday for something else.
He's trying to.
Denny, you want to make comment? You should come up to a microphone.
I meant to mention this during citizen speak, but I had so much to say. Thank you. You can put it down. I, recently, a number of five of us were out and we found a blue-spotted salamander and we recorded it with the state. And I can send the email confirmation that it's been recorded with the state, the heritage, the organization that's with mass wildlife, but that is a rare and special species.
Yeah, that would certainly be relevant, I would think.
And I can provide you that material. I provided it to the Conservation Commission last week at their meeting, but I can also provide that to you.
Could you imagine where it was found?
Yes, it was, it was found, we don't want to say exactly because we don't want any salamander seekers to come and try to get some more, but it was found between Fall Meadow and the development site, right on the property line between, and I'd be happy to share that exact site with Amory for her knowledge. And also, I'd like to provide some historical background binders by the end of the week. This, I, I know sometimes neighborhoods say historical background, but the significance of the historical background is really key. For example, on Avenue A, you had Roger Olson, who was the Secretary of State and Attorney General for Grover Cleveland administration, and he. General for Grover Cleveland administration, and he was, he drafted up one of the first Avenue A agreements, covenants, shared way, so we're dealing with some good attorneys from way back when, 1920-ish, and then you have the Rich Augustus and Harriet Hemingway history, but I will provide that to you by the end of the week.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
So just to recap, so John Flynn, our town council, is going to make some further edits, send it to us in a draft, and then you're going to walk the site on June 1st. Katie, you're going to walk it, and then on June 6th, we'll, we'll take a vote on the...
Well, I wonder whether we should have as an agenda item on the 30th, even though I know there's a lot of police interviews that night, how many?
We can certainly put it on there, we just might not get to it.
We might not get to it, but I think it should be on the agenda in case we want to have any further discussions. We may or may not, but it's an important enough project that we may want to address it at two more meetings. That doesn't mean John and Bill have to be here, but we could, if there's a draft before then, we could take it up after the interviews.
You think that's enough time, John?
Yes.
To get a draft?
Yes.
Are we all good?
I think so.
Good, John?
I'll show it to John.
Second.
Deborah?
Aye.